Happy Mardi Gras. I'd like to call to order on this Mardi Gras day, the city council meeting, February ninth thirteenth at five o'clock. And Mr. Rogers, did you get your beads? Oh, you got your beads over there. We have three items on the agenda today on our work session. We are going to start and yeah. To a discussion regarding the Flugerville Community Development Corporation Comprehensive Economic Development Strategic Plan. Amy and Tony and Brian and Edgar and Ernest and Young.
We promise we won't sing.
Ernst and Young. Yeah, it sounds like a pop group.
Well, we, some of us have that talent.
Peter, Peter Paul and Mary, you know?
It is Mardi Gras after all. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. We're here this evening to discuss the SEDS three point O that's been under construction by Ernst and Young, and I'm going to turn that over to Tony Delisi.
Yeah, good. This is officially evening at five. Good evening. It's nice to see all of you again. I know, you know, this has been an ongoing process for a number of months now, so hopefully there's no real surprises in here. We've been you know, meeting regularly and touching base with all of you, including members of you that are part of the PCDC board. But you've had some time to review a draft of the full SEDS document. And we were hoping to just kind of walk through some of the portions of that, take some time to have discussion, answer questions. And yeah, see how y'all are feeling about it. But just to summarize to kind of what went into this, this wasn't just us going off into space. As you know, we've been integrating with you through workshops with the board and council together. We've had three steering committee meetings with representatives from across the community, some of whom are here in the room tonight. As well as conducting interviews with a number of stakeholders, representatives of businesses, educational institutions, other groups throughout the region, and some other input generated from a survey. They got even further input from some of the businesses that are that are driving economic growth here in Flugerville. So what we learned, we heard very clearly continuing is that wanting in that bold, very future oriented vision for the community, something that's unique about Flugerville. We know Flugerville is unique, but how do we continue to iterate on that in the future? And have Flugerville stand out among communities, not just in central Texas, but across the country. And part of that was exploring this feasibility of an innovation district. I know there's a strong desire to see more of that office development. That type of of growth that others have seen and that you've seen in other communities. More of those jobs and locations that keep Flugerville residents here so they don't commute out. So how do we really explore the development of that? What what can we do as a city, as the PCDC and others to make that happen? You know, thinking about how that works around targeted industries, higher education is a priority. That's something that has come up and really building up entrepreneurial support for those small businesses to grow and develop here in Flugerville. Overall with that is thinking through how this can be a balanced strategy that focuses on those primary employers. But also looks at quality of life, those community amenities, those restaurants, entertainment. Those things that everybody we heard from the steering committee from you and others want to see here in Flugerville. So how do we think about those targeted investments and other things that the PCDC can do along with the city and other partners to help see those things accelerate? So how we got here, we we heard from other stakeholders with the steering committee as well as the board. Taking a vision statement, this is derived from your existing city strategic plan. It's not exactly the same because it's focused on economic development, but how can we take those portions of that to really hone in on an economic development vision that is aligned with and continues to support the overall strategy and comprehensive plan for the city of Flugerville as well? I'll just take a pause. Any questions? I mean, this should be kind of where we all know it's going. But so thinking through how we move that forward towards that vision, we identified three main goal areas to focus on. One is around building that economy of tomorrow. How do we get more of those types of jobs and that type of development that folks want to see here in the community? How do we really focus then on developing the next generation of workforce? Both training Flugerville residents for great jobs that that are going to get them higher incomes so that they can continue to afford to live here. They can also support the growth of those types of businesses that you want to see here in the in the city itself. And then also thinking through the future community, how do we continue to elevate Flugerville's profile, making those investments in the community that enhance the quality of life? Continue to make this an ongoing sustainable place that people want to live and businesses want to be. But also telling that story so that businesses and people understand the qualities that are here in Flugerville. Just touch on this briefly, there was some adjustment thinking through the those targeted industries. I know we we heard loud and clear that continued evolution of what you'd like to see developed here. So it's not to say, you know, this is America, it's a free country, businesses will choose to go where where they choose to go. But if we're making decisions about the types of investments that we want to make, what we want to deliberately try to incentivize, attract, create our zoning and other development towards really focusing on those right target industries. So making some shifts from the last strategy. Instead of focusing on advanced technology and manufacturing, really honing in on the type of business that we'd like to see in here. And so emphasizing the technology and innovation component of this. This aligns very nicely with trends that we're seeing in the region, rapid growth in Flugerville and across central Texas in this space. And really incentivized by global trends that are occurring, investments from the federal government that are focusing in on more of that technology and development. That new infrastructure supporting semiconductor manufacturing, but who are those folks designing the chips, designing components for that, other portions of it? These are more office type jobs. These are the advanced higher wage area. The types of jobs held by many Flugerville residents who are commuting out to places like Samsung and Dell and others. Life sciences being another strong focus for the region. We've seen incredible growth in this area. There's some strategies in here particularly about how can we support more development of that in Flugerville? And continuing to focus on software and information technology, which has been a backbone for the regional economy for many years. But then shifting that focus, instead of saying headquarters and corporate campuses, because that's a type of development, it can be industry agnostic. And so within all of these, certainly wanting to see that and encourage that. But creating that additional clear focus on retail, which is something that already in agreement, the city and PCDC are focusing on. But making sure that we have that front and center to think through those strategies that are already being developed for how we can continue to accelerate the growth of the types of retail that you like to see.
Yeah, and and Tony, I mean, you you said a lot. It all makes sense. It really does. In terms of the definitions and the and the targets and, you know, the the industries and so forth. And I've read through the SEDS and I might have missed it. And we can talk about that later. Is one of the things that I just came to mind is all that sounds really great, but within the strategy. Is there a game plan, a playbook that gives us direction on how we can be competitive? Because we see the same things you're talking about right here, we're talking about Orlando and Cedar Park and Leander. And now Taylor, they're coming down and for specific reasons, I know why they're going there. Okay, but how do we become competitive? And what are the 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 challenges that we have as a community to be able to have that canvas available for these opportunities?
That's a great question. I think it's a different answer for each of these industries as part of this. And I'll say one thing, all of these are growing currently very strongly, very rapidly in Flugerville. We've looked at the numbers. There is faster growth in every one of these sectors in Flugerville than in the region overall. And the region overall is growing faster than Texas, growing faster in the US. So the growth is happening, but how do we get more of it? So, you know, one example, and we talked about this a lot with office, and we've seen some of these examples where companies have made announcement recently going to Leander or other locations. There are offices there that exist that are already ready for them to locate. And they're not looking to build a building and then look and set up shop. They're looking to just place themselves there. That doesn't exist in quite the quantity here in Flugerville, and we've talked about this for years.
Is that the focus we need to?
So that's one. Certainly for one. So for advanced technology innovation, some of those spaces are actually using these flex spaces. They're partially office, partially building and testing prototypes and building these things out. Others, though, it is having that office in place. But then, and this goes into the strategy, how do you get office built, especially in this market in a place like Flugerville? And this idea around the Innovation Entrepreneurship Center is to prove the market. You know, this is going to take a few years.
I don't think we have to prove the market. I think the market has proven itself.
But but we don't see that development here. The the lack of office shows that it isn't proven.
And that's where I'm going with this. That's where I'm going with that is we don't see it here. Why not? Okay, is it because we don't have a building or property or whatever? I mean, I I understand.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. So part of the strategy is to to build it. I mean, it's a little if you build it, they will come. But if you build something and inhabit it in the right process, you're showing folks what you want to see built here. And then they can see themselves and see more of that opportunity to accelerate that additional development around that.
So time and time and time and time again, and then some more times. We've had developers stand before us and tell us how the office market is dead. There's there's too much vacant office space in Austin. Building office space is dumb. They can't get funding for it. If we zone for it, we're we're not thinking forward into the future. All the things, right? And and this is a constant sort of barrage of feedback we get from the development community, in my opinion. And so, but at the same time, I've heard reports that there are are pockets of offices that that are going up kind of in 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 non-urban centers, right? Kind of in the in the periphery, out out in the MSA areas. That are that are specific. And I I think, I don't know, forty years ago, thirty years ago, I think about Los Kalinis, right? No one wanted to go to Dallas. This little little bitty place in a field somewhere called Los Kalinis started up. And suddenly they're trying to de-annex themselves five years later because they want to collect their own taxes. And everyone's like, where'd that come from? So so I guess my point is, you know, parallel to the mayor's here is, we hear what you're saying. But but I'm not convinced either that the the way to to motivate developers to to build that space that's move in ready for these people that apparently exist, but they're not aware of. I'm not convinced that 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 is is accomplished through anything that I've seen here.
I think there's a couple of things addressed in what you said here. One, you know, you've talked to folks right now. This is not a great market for office, but this is also one year. These things fluctuate and go up and down. Look at the history of development and how this occurs. We're coming out of a period where there's been a de-emphasis on office and there are vacancies. You know, we pulled some stats from research that the firm does globally looking at this, and I can't remember the exact numbers. Mary was looking at here, but we're actually seeing a trend where larger office users are decreasing their size and space, firms like EY. But smaller sized firms are actually increasing the amount of office that they're using. So the market is in flux and it's more that folks don't fully understand where it's going. And if anything, the current interest rates have been a major deterrent to building more as well. So interest rates are going to change, market dynamics are going to change. Getting something built to put in the ground as a statement here isn't going to happen tomorrow. And so over that course of that period, we're expecting change to be occurring further in the office market. Additional points of, you know, Los Kalinis thirty years ago, in the nineties and in the early two thousands, yes, a lot of office was being built more in suburban markets in large corporate campuses. With the two thousand eight recession, that trend reversed completely. And there was almost no construction in suburban markets for the following sixteen years. It was all going to downtown cores. We're expecting to see somewhat of a mix of that now going forward. We're still hearing from users consistently that they want transportation connectivity amenities, surrender. You know, a centralized location with other things around it. And there is a model, and we shared some examples of this, where these innovation clustered centers are a focal point. If you anchor them with the right uses, some entrepreneurial support, a focus on industries, a higher education presence. And these things build out and are populated and effective. And then, once you have those users in that space, that is the hope to attract more. I hear you, though. If the market isn't good, the alternative is let's not focus on office or build any office.
Tony, can I ask you something about what you just brought up? Mansfield was brought up as a comparison regarding your analogy. What educational industry, educational partner did they bring in over there, higher end partner in Mansfield?
I don't, off the top of my head, I don't know about Mansfield.
Because that took me for, I mean, I was very surprised to see that, given what you were talking.
Yeah, Mansfield was more of a coworking and an entrepreneurial space focused effort, but we can bring up some other examples where they have.
Oh, no, no, you did. You mean, I saw that whole factory.
I know that they have.
Cyber Innovation Center, some of the places.
They've recently signed, and I don't know the exact university, but they have recently. Yes, I was going to say they have recently. I I know worked with a consortium and are including an educational component, but they haven't announced.
They being Mansfield?
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
But you know, the point I'll say here is, you know, I agree, this is not easy, and this is why this hasn't happened naturally. And you've had all these conversations. The alternative is, I mean, we'll give up on office. That's fine. Then you're not going to see office developed here unless you're waiting and slowing. This is trying to go through all the different strategies we have seen communities do in positions like this to move this forward and to accelerate. And this is one of those strategies around the office side of it. I mean, to the mayor's question, though, going to these other industries, when you're looking at life sciences, there's direct strategies in here. This is something the region is focused on around wet lab space. And it's a distinct need. Opportunity Austin is focusing on it. It's partnerships between UT and developers to build out this space. It is one of the limiting factors on the ability of this industry to grow.
And to that point, if opportunity Austin is 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 gearing that way, and you said it's 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 being uh, this is the area. So what is it we need to do to get an edge on the people that are out there?
Have a dedicated wet lab development building that is a space for that. It is for wet lab, for life sciences users. You have it built in a partnership with a private developer. You know what the cost is. It's marketed as that. You're out there and all these trips and with all these companies saying, come here. We are, we are the place you that you need to be. Georgetown is doing similar things. Round Rock is doing similar things, focused on life sciences.
Essentially, what you're saying is that we need to look at what's the trend, what people are looking for. And we're and we're going to artificially, for a better lack of term, jumpstart the market ourselves because we know the capital and the interest in investments in there. And then to the mayor's point, consequently, if in fact we do something along those lines, and we actually say, hey, listen, this is what we're doing moving forward from that. We will attract those folks more likely than not, because one, there's just not that much space if you want to stay in, you know, Travis County, I was going to say Territans. You know, to actually build this stuff out. And then two, factually speaking, it will go ahead and garner even different interests in there. I I thought it was very interesting that you did bring up, you know, and I think we've said this as a council before, that, you know, what do we, what makes Flugerville unique? What makes it different? What are we going to actually be cognizant and known for? You're right. I did see, well, there it is right there, industrial manufacturing, machine rig growth right there. And then you you talked about how, I mean, it is, it is outsized, not just for, I found it interesting, not for just the area, but for the country, the United States. We have that right there. And and I think there's many of us who are like, that's good. I will take your advice about what you said before and I won't. And then here right there, so I'll say anything else about that. But I mean, how do we make that pivot? And I and I think that's that artificial pivot, I think that's interesting.
And and that's the thing, you know, what what came out through that OA regional strategy was the notice that, and we had real estate developers as part of that steering committee that notably were shocked by how much pent up demand there is when you look at the market there. And it sparked conversation and people are spinning up wet lab space right now across the region to fill that pent up demand. It's it's, you know, this is part of how we do it. If we want to shift a trajectory, you know, we stand back and do nothing. Businesses are going to make decisions. They're going to come here. You've got manufacturing that's coming here. That's what's been the trend. Do you want to shift towards other things? It's making bold moves and trying some of these initiatives to move things forward because the alternative, you know, to to council member McDonald's point is, you know, people saying the market's not great, nothing's going to happen. And that that's the thinking here.
I thought you're, I thought your veteran jumpstart too with the bunker labs, that was interesting too as well, given our population.
Let me, let me understand the wet lab space. Is that, i- is your proposal R and D space or is it manufacturing space?
So wet lab space is a combination of the two, generally speaking. They have particular needs that are heavier on HVAC and other things because they're actually testing out, doing research and development with various chemicals and other technologies. And they're prototyping things. So I mean, that is manufacturing. That's what a lot of when we say advanced technology and innovation is, they're testing these things out. Possibly when they're doing mass production, they're shipping that out to suppliers across the country overseas. But truly, these are folks that are building things through a design. They've got offices there with computers. I mean, it's what you think of as an office. But attached to that and part of it, especially in wet labs, is a particular need for that HVAC equipment, you know, the gas lines, all the things that go into that. The challenge that they find not having dedicated space, we've talked to a lot of these companies, is if they go into a more normal flex space, they as the user have to pay to install all of that. And then when they leave, the landlord or the owner requires them to pay to de-install of that, creates a tremendous cost. If the space is already dedicated to life sciences user, that's removed from many of these startups and they can actually come in, begin operations. If they leave, another room can come in and you've got that nice cycle that actually allows them to to have better margins and grow.
So why would a wet lab company want to come to Flugerville? It seems like from the prerequisites that you're talking about, chemicals, expertise in medical and biological sciences, the natural place for them to be in Texas would be Houston.
Well, Tucson already is a huge life sciences center. Since the University of Texas Medical School opened, this has opened up new possibilities because there's a lot of clinical research occurring and not all the same research is occurring, different technologies. You know, whether we're talking about spinal orthopedics or we're talking about cancer research in Houston, there's differences in this industry that vary by region. You know, in central Texas, right now, the life sciences community is spread all across the region, which is different from what we see in some places like Boston or Miami, where they're heavily concentrated in particular districts. So right now, you know, the northern part of the region, Georgetown, somewhat Round Rock are trying to establish some of that life sciences clusters, but so is San Marcos. There's companies in Bastrop right now operating in this space, and there's some downtown. But Flugerville is not precluded from this discussion. And in fact, having some of the tools that you have with the the PCDC and others and having some land, there's potential to put this in place where it could be more expensive to do in downtown Austin.
Right, we have the land and we have the road to get things from Houston, right up the Tulare.
Yeah, but do we have the land? One of your discussion points is that I felt was interesting to see the the significant growth in our ETJ as just opposed to what's in the city limits and, you know, our ability to effectuate what happens from there. And a lack of turnkey from there. If you're telling me that ultimately what we can do is that we can look at something where in fact, and this is where this is what Mayor approached, and what Doug was just saying about this is that we know we have an inordinate amount of industrial manufacturing. We we have that right there as well, part of that that works from there. However, trying to make the pivot. Wet labs have a unique ability to have a juxtaposition between both categories for which we're actually looking for. And try to ascertain a certain portion of that market, and we can become disproportionate with that too as well. But it seems that to have that happen, we're going to have to be the people who are willing to go in there and build it ourselves to go ahead and and put the test for the market. Now, to be fair to you, what you just said, you just shown, I think you said something about the University of Texas in north, north Austin near Palmer Lane, you know, they've just got like ten thousand square feet of stage. So so we know that the market's out there, so it's not necessarily as much of a leap of faith on that. We just want to make sure that if we're going to do something like that, because the way you talked about is rent, rinse, repeat. You know, because you don't want to have to actually, if you're renting the position, actually put the 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 property back to its original conditioning. That we will have repeat clientele to help fill that space as opposed to, man, this is kick ass and awesome right now. In five years, not so much.
Do we want to have the city engaged in directly building something like that? Or do we want to do something more like what we did, a new Meister Lane? More like something we did in the area of the or the PCDC and Community Impact where we put it, we either buy land or put in infrastructure or both to allow someone else to do that and have the private sector do the actual building with the idea that that some of the costs that they would ordinarily incur would be things that would be subsidized by the PCDC and the city.
I think that is exactly.
I think you have a P three?
I was going to say P three from the beginning here. I mean, that is generally the model on this. You want to get an operator who both understands the market in terms of.
You're trying to say we're not experts in building wet labs?
I'd say, you know, government is not always the best at 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 building, you know, the perfect spec infrastructure and managing it. But there are groups and more and more of them looking at Austin as they see this in that partnership. I mean, that is UT. But UT is partnering with a private developer who knows how to build wet labs, understands the market, is assessing this. And so it's trying to find a way to to make that actually work in an economical fashion.
So so let me ask you this. So what I what I heard early on in this conversation is these are industries that are disproportionately growing here. They're growing at a faster rate than than they are in Austin. They're growing at a faster rate than than they are in Texas. It it makes me feel like these target industries are, we're we're chasing what's already, you know, headed our direction. That, why are we, why are we taking the easy way out?
I think the difference is the type of the development in the sense that you want to see. We've heard loud and clear from all of you that in terms of the types of structure, because they they can inhabit different forms.
Well, if if it's if it's a type of structure argument, then are we looking at, is the entire concept of a target industry flawed? Should we be looking at at target structures? When you said earlier that, you know, office and headquarters doesn't really fit in in any of these, and then we walked over and we moved on.
They fit in all of them. They're they're industry agnostic. They're, you don't.
And yet, and yet, industry agnostic, I think several of us have had the concern up here, and correct me if I'm wrong, folks. But that, you know, if we're targeting these industries, well, it's not these industries necessarily that we're targeting. We're targeting a a type of engagement within the community, industry agnostic. So why are we focused on these particular industries if any industry could bring us what we're what we're going after?
I guess the sense is you want to be focusing on industries that are growing, period, versus industries that are not. And ideally, you're focusing on industries that you want to see growing more rapidly. So the the rate of growth is faster, but that doesn't mean that the concentration is here. You still don't have very many of them. So the rate is fast because you're starting from little. And so, you know, ten jobs to twenty jobs is a tremendous growth rate. It's still only twenty jobs in a community. And so the idea is to build that up, to actually have a concentration level, to have a recognition for where you are in this space.
But it's also cannibalistic within the the MSA. If we're, so so we're competing with Leander, Cedar Park, Kyle, Buta, Austin as a whole, Maynor, Elgin, Taylor, whatever. Why would we not rather target industries that are growing in the nation but aren't necessarily growing in Texas? Or aren't necessarily growing in our own MSA? It seems like that would be more of a a blue ocean strategy rather than a red ocean strategy.
Well, let's say you're you're not cannibalizing because generally this isn't targeting a business that's already in Leander to come here. That's a big no-no in regional economic development.
Oh, absolutely. But if we're targeting all the same industries, then we're all competing for the businesses. It's the Kansas City effect. Are we just pushing stuff across state lines?
Well, we're not allowed first that, A, there's no industry that isn't growing in Texas. Texas is booming across every single industry. This is true. And even when you look at this for the Austin region, you know, we did a similar chart. Look at your chart. What is the one industry not growing here? Nonprofits.
Well, I saw it, well, educate, I saw education nonprofits, which I found.
Yeah, there there've been some changes. It overlaps the COVID and there was some job losses in education. But the truth is, Texas is booming in every single industry, and this is about figuring out those industries that make sense, that want to be here, that want to grow. When we're trying to attract too, it's about natural resources and things that support this. I mean, we we've exhaustively went across other industries. This captures pretty much all office users if we're not talking about attorney's offices and things like that, but we could go after those and attract that as well. But those generally are serving a local economy that's already here or supportive in in this region. These are ones that are.
It's the doctor argument against primary jobs.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, doctors are important too, and we want to support that type of growth, and there's medical centers and those things that come along with that. But really focusing on those ones that are growing. And so, you know, to the mayor's original question of why, you know, some of these are going to Leander or Cedar Park and others. When they're going here, we're not cannibalizing as a regional economy. They're looking here at. When they're going here, we're not cannibalizing as a regional economy. They're looking here at central Texas. They're not coming in looking at Flugerville. They're coming in to say, we wanna be here. We wanna find a place for ourselves. Where can we be? And they're gonna say, are there, is there office space? Is there, you know, the ge- the logistical infrastructure, the highways, the things that we need? Is the educational talent here? Two part of the strategy, do we have a workforce system that is robust that if we come? We know we can partner with them and develop programs that are gonna help produce the types of employees that we need. Businesses are looking for exactly that, for those partnerships, for those assets, for those places. And that, you know, that's a.
You just hit on, on another one of my frustrations with the, uh, with the SEDs is the workforce. And we keep focusing on the workforce that. Our target industries need while we have a workforce here that leaves town, uh, every day. Uh, what is it? Ninety-two percent of the people in Flugerville leave town to go to work. We've got folks who are highly skilled. Who are already here and it seems like we're not, we're not focused on what we already have. We keep building up things that we don't have and these things we don't have. Don't, don't seem to pay as well as what we already have. So why are we focused on workforce development to in. To incentivize and gain new target industries that don't even meet the minimum standard that we already have?
Well, I, I'd push back on that cause I think that there's three different prongs to the whole workforce component and you need to look at all of these. One is. All these companies right here are looking at exactly the people that you have here in this community now. So.
Develop new workforce if they're looking for the people.
People that are already here are gonna retire. There's a constant flux of employees. Also, every one of these industries, if you talk to them across the US are struggling to find people. The people that are already here in Flugerville have jobs. Maybe they'll come work for a new employer. Hopefully if they pay higher wages, there's competition here. Where they're currently working is gonna be pretty pissed off then it might raise their wages as well, creating again, the need for new workers in this space. Every single part of this country is constantly looking for the flexibility, cause the needs of their skills are changing constantly. In every industry, in our industry, they're looking for a community that has multi-pronged elements of this. They're looking for, well, let me take this back. The businesses are looking for places where they can plug in if they need to. And potentially help develop curriculum that's going to change and develop those partnerships and have people that they can work with. And this includes K through 12. As well as, um, you know, community colleges and post-secondary at all those levels, depending on the businesses that you're talking about. Additionally to that, the strategy is thinking about those people growing up in Flugerville. How can we prepare them for good jobs so that they're gonna make decent money to stay in Flugerville? Some of those jobs hopefully will be with employers in Flugerville. But hopefully too, they're making money somewhere that they can drive nearby that allows them to continue to pay a wage that keeps or. Receive a wage that keeps them living here in the community. So it's really thinking about how do we as a community, support all elements of that. Are people getting education that's gonna allow them to thrive and not have to leave and move away and never have a chance here? But also having a system that allows any employer to plug in and help connect and develop curriculum. And find those people, connect them through apprenticeships, internships, whatever it is that's gonna allow that business to grow. And it's a mutually beneficial arrangement.
That sounds more like a race to the bottom for me. That's, that's, once we start. I, I'm always a big fan, uh, post-secondary education and, and that's another complaint of mine that we, we reference post-secondary education and credentials. And workforce development, and then we use the term interchangeably. The post-secondary education is teaching people to think. Uh, whereas what you described is te- teaching people how to do individual things. If all we're getting into is a commoditization, commoditization of the workforce. Uh, we, we end up behind everyone else. It's, it's not a, it's not a growth strategy. It's not a prosperity strategy.
I, I would disagree if you look at how this is working out all across the country and it's all levels. Literally when we're, the, the whole conversation around education in this country is shifting to a recognition that college does not mean a four-year degree.
More broad definition of what?
It, it is a recognition that success looks like somebody getting whatever skillset they need to have a productive career.
And, and yet in here, don't we say that, uh, in, uh, in the next five years, 92% of the jobs will require some sort of. Post-secondary.
And that's, that could be a micro credential. That could be a associate degree. That could be.
Define post-secondary for me.
Anything after high school.
It, it's, it, the, the definition, well, we'll go here. I mean, let's, let's be fair though. What he's saying is the legacy definition that most people. Now, we're redefining that. That's happened because of major places like ACC. That's not just an example for. You know, central Texas or the state of Texas, but for the country. But when people see that, that's their perception with that. And, and, and more, and also to Doug's point. It's interesting to see, um, and I give you, by the way, y'all gave some great stats. I really do appreciate that. But to see that we have a disproportionate amount on all sincerity of people make six-figure incomes here in Flugerville as compared to not only just a region, but the state. And there, and state, I mean, in the country, it's interesting with that. So if we're trying to go ahead and look at those jobs, it may have been. Behooved y'all more to start to not only define what posts, you know, secondary education looks like. But also some of those jobs and those, um, those, um, salaries that go with it. Cause those skillsets, you're right. There's a reason why you're looking at people saying that we need, you know, electricians, plumbers, what we're doing, we're doing programming. All these other jobs that are going on, um, in other places that to be honest with you, we're shipping in here. You know, from India, from others, California, other places, cause we don't have the skillset here in central Texas. And I think that's an interesting discussion, right? Because then that starts to focus more on what we're talking about. Okay, listen, these are the jobs that are happening right here, by the way, post-secondary. Doesn't necessarily have to be college, but, and this is the salaries that go with it. If you're able to do, um, a capital factory, which I still. Struggle to see how that would work here in Flugerville. Um, I think a, a we were, I think I've heard Serena talk about before, you know, something. Along those lines and I'm very intrigued to see what Mansfield is doing with that and partner with some sort of higher ed or some other folks with that as well. Maybe. Um, uh, workforce, capital, um, capital workforce, whatever Tamara's, uh, Tamara's group is, I forgot what it's called. Um, that may be interesting to see that, but for us, when you're looking at this, like, you know, it's a 10,000-foot view, you're kind of like. Okay, so how are we defining this? Why does this look different than what?
And, and to give some clarity in this, I mean, these things, you know, there are software companies across the country now that are not looking for bachelor's degrees to hire. They, they, this is very real. They are focusing on people having the skillset. And so there's a range of credentials that you can get that just show that you have the.
Because they find people too rigid.
And are making them six figures with, without a college degree. That is out there. There are lots of jobs in the space. This, we're not just talking about electricians. When, when you hear post-secondary or credentials, we're not just talking about electricians and plumbers. This is a whole range of jobs that are out here. We do, but through engineers, I mean, these jobs right here, when you look at the wage levels in there and it's in the study, these are all high paying sectors. They're much higher paying than the average here. The lowest paying is retail. That, that is where, you know, in this country, the, our lowest paying sector by far. Is retail and service industries of that sort. But these other sectors are creating good, high-paying jobs and often they require. A bachelor's degree. Some might require a credential in between. Some are gonna require a master's degree in engineering and a range of areas. But this is about, so, you know, the strategy here identifies the ways that we can expand Flugerville's ability to both train people that live here. Also to connect with businesses to help them better receive training. But the idea I know with the, the TIP study building on this. Is to dig in and say, what are those occupations? What are those skillsets? Knowing that they're in flux, that they change and engaging with the businesses to see that more directly, looking at the statistics that are out there. On job boards, on LinkedIn, on others, and helping really figure out, all right, we're building the system to make this work. Then in the next five years, what do we need to specifically be training for?
Well, and, and I mean. So now let me play devil's advocate. We just brought that up. Going back to education and we see where education is in the wrong part of the, of the quadrant right here. Um, we're well aware of the deficit that's happening in higher ed. I mean, well, and to Doug's point, what do you define as education? Cause if we're saying that, you, you, you mentioned COVID, but still a couple of years later, we're still seeing less and less people go to four-year colleges. And I'm, I'm, my impression would be that you mean four-year colleges and education. I could be wrong. I just wanna know what your definition of education is.
Associate, you know, two-year college counts as well in education. This stat in here should say, you know, I think it's. You know, this includes K through 12. It's separated out from government. So this is all education essentially. Cause you don't have four-year college here in Flugerville. Or two, yeah. Um, no, I mean, these are all really good questions. I'll say like, you know, and this is, these are tough questions. I, these are the, the conversations and the strategies that communities across this country are pursuing around this. I, I mean, I, I appreciate the skepticism on this and why these are tough, but, um, yeah, to continue.
Well, they're tough because we live here.
And that's a great point. You live here and you don't, and you're gonna finish the job and you're gonna be gone. And we're gonna be stuck here trying to push wet labs versus say dry labs, which we know dry labs are big here in, in the central Texas area. Wet labs. I think, did you say Houston, Jim? I think you were saying Houston. I, I still could say San Antonio too. Because they have a lot of medical out there. I mean, we're talking about, uh, jobs that deal with chemicals and other type of biological matter. Uh, I, I just don't see that here in central Texas versus dry labs, which deal more with AI. Or stuff like that, which, you know, I had somebody, you know, really high up in DC recently telling me. AI is the way to go. It's, it's gonna change the world in three years and you're not gonna recognize this world in three years. And you're telling me wet labs is the way to go.
I'm, I would say we're not just saying that. That is where exactly the other strategy around innovation entrepreneurship center and building this out is specifically. To build out and identify what those opportunities are that could work.
But you need to understand the concern on this board, I believe. If, if, hopefully I'm speaking for the board or the, the council in saying that. You know, uh, you're asking us to put this faith in you, that this is, that, that we're gonna give direction to PCDC to go forth. And do this and it might not work. So. That's a valid concern, I think, especially when, when wet labs are market-driven. We talked about the market, Rudy talked about the market a while ago. It's market-driven. I mean, we all know what happened in O eight. Um, so you're saying we need more office space. Let's be honest. You're saying office space? This wet lab space is gonna look like warehouses. Let's just call it what it is.
That is, I would disagree with that if you've seen the concepts of how these are built, but.
Do you have a, a?
The one, we could pull it up. The one that UT is building right now up on Palmer's? And, 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 and I, I appreciate your concern. These are all risks. You're making investments, but what we were asked to do by the group was here. Think about strategies to grow office, to diversify the economy and think these things through. And all of those require taking a proactive step in the, in one of these directions. And I would say multiple. And these don't happen overnight. You're not immediately building this and committing your funds. You're exploring it and taking the appropriate due diligence and steps along all of these. But the point is, the alternative is do nothing. And that is what will come to you will come.
Not really the alternative. The alternative is not do what you tell us.
Or find something else to do or start over and do something else. Yeah, don't give us the false choice.
No, I, I apologize on that front, but I will say we have explored and can, will continue to explore what, what are the possibilities? We've done this work around the country. We see what, you know, discussed with you directly, what you can proactively be doing. And, you know, are, are open to continuing additional exploration of.
You know, one, one of my concerns is I've been thinking through all of this and I try to do as little thinking as possible. Is that, you know, you're talking about, you know, you know, putting our irons in the fire and getting things started. With the entrepreneurial innovation center and, um, uh, and, and I get, get all that and. But the process itself takes anywhere from two to three to four to five years. So by the time we, we get to the fifth year. Because technology, because of AI, because of number of things, uh, and the region. Changes so fast is that in year four, oops, we're already behind. We. We find ourselves in the wrong place and now we gotta regroup again. And here comes SEDs four point oh. And here we are again.
I guess I would say, I don't think building anything occurs quickly. This country. And so that is part of the process.
Could you, could you tell me since two point oh, what steps did we take? That either led us to life sciences or, or that we discovered about life sciences that inform our decision here? Uh, cause I do know life science was, was referenced in, in two point oh.
Yeah, and they've con- and it's continued to grow partially. There's been new investments in building of medical centers and building.
What did we incentivize? What jobs did we bring?
It wasn't directly incentivized, but there has been growth primarily less of it in medical devices or that side of it. But more the broader life sciences, when you're thinking about doctors' offices and medical clinics and expansion here. Part of that though is within the region, there has been more growth. And so in terms of opportunity. In terms of incentivization, again, where would they go right now to be building us out? And so. This is how do we continue to accelerate this and do it more effectively? You can incentivize them if they come here and they have a place to locate. But if they're coming and looking at a blank field, a life sciences company is less likely to be opening up a shop here.
You, you bring me to another point, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pause before I hit it. You mentioned doctors' offices again and doctors' offices are specifically excluded from, uh, the four B, uh, charge. They're, they're not primary jobs because they only serve a local population. So, uh, I didn't hear, I, I heard that life sciences have come. Without, uh, without regard to incentives, but what have we actually seen in terms of growth of life sciences? Here, do we have specific examples?
It's a question for Amy about the activity.
The one project that we did that we were able to land was because we had wet lab here current. Without it, we can't recruit it.
So we already had a, a facility with a wet lab? How many jobs did that bring?
Uh, it was curative and it was only over 250 jobs. They are still here, but they're, they had to do transition, cause as you know, they came during COVID and so their transition is still serving out of that facility.
How many jobs are they currently?
I don't know right off the top of my head. I'm sorry. But they, that was their headquarters and that's why we had this stupid. And by the way, we didn't incentivize, we just helped to find the building and do. Do the go-through process on the renovation. So, but that, we did build the one building that we had.
Well, that was because of demand.
Why? And demand does drive all of that. But again, to what we've been discussing. You know, build it and they will come is one theory. And looking at where we are today, we have a single building that meets that.
So what you're telling me is that, it, like I said before, is that you're, you're, it's a leap, that you don't think it's that crazy of a leap. Given market space and everything else for it. But I, I kinda wanna go back to what Doug's question though. Uh, I don't wanna say objective, non-responsive. What was it specifically in the prior sets that led to that happening? That's what he was saying. He's saying like, what was there that's a wet labs? Like, i- you mean, did this happen by happenstance? Or did it happen because of what we had in the prior sets that led to that conclusion? For your ability to get that, that space for that company?
Yeah, we, we didn't plan to build wet lab space in the last SEDs.
So, no, that's what.
Plan to recruit life sciences.
Yeah, that's what, and that's what he was asking. He was asking what, what, what was in the SEDs that led to this? And that's why, I mean, we, we got it by happenstance, great job, but that's a good question to say, okay, did, did we have something specifically in the SEDs? That denoted or led to that specific conclusion of that opportunity to occur?
We did marketing via different opportunities we had, uh, to life sciences.
So we, we called it professional technology services and it was Opportunity Austin with life sciences and Team Texas with biotechnology and life sciences. So, and we, we were focused on professional technology services and we leveraged our relationship with those organizations to. Pursue life sciences? So why the transition from professional technology services to more honed in life sciences?
From SEDs one to SEDs two?
No, this is SEDs two, I think.
I, I believe was life sciences is one of the targets.
Yeah, you know what I am in, in.
No, and, and that was a recognition from one to two, as I recall, that you had gotten a medical center here. And there actually was some life sciences presence building in the community. It was also at the time, I think, the medical school. Was officially getting going in the region and expanding this through conversations to choose a focus on this. And to Amy's point, I mean, part of economic development, the way this occurs is that marketing, having it on your website, having it in the literature with Opportunity Austin and others. So that when a business is looking and they do do their first look on the web, they're looking at cities. They see opportunities, they look in an economic development organization. If there's an open door in the sense of saying, hey, we're interested in these companies. That's a lot more inviting for them to make a first step, to do a reach out. If you're associated with the collateral that's in Opportunity Austin in your regional group, when a project comes down from the state to the region, as they often do. They're gonna say, hey, we're interested in life sciences. People will know, hey, Flugerville is developing something that is interesting that. We'll make sure to put them on the list as a contact point. The process for how these projects occur does matter that you have this as a targeted list. Beyond just investment that you're making in the community.
You, you mentioned the collateral on the website. So apparently the website does say SEDs two point oh, but only lists. It's, it's only got links. SEDS two point O, but only lists. It's it's only got links for one point O for some reason. We'll probably wanna get the the website updated. I do wanna go back to, uh, you, you said, you know, if someone comes in and they they only see a green field, they can't see the wet lab. They can't see the the potential. Um, and that's a, that's an argument that frequently frustrates me because. I think people have more vision than that, hopefully, but also because it's this um, this tangential argument that. They they aren't gonna go here because they can build something else faster somewhere else, or because something else already exists somewhere else. But in in the entire SEDS here, I I kept seeing that argument that we need to have space available. That things like our impact fees are too high, uh, but I didn't see any comparatives. Because as far as I can tell, you know, we we are the one community with infrastructure along SH one thirty. Uh, we are, we are the community that is most prepared for that development to occur. So when we say, oh, it's all green filled, it's it's can't happen. We're the closest to it happening anyway. No one else is gonna be any faster. So why, why is that a a consistent?
I think there's different things we're talking about here. When you're talking about a life sciences company, most of these folks are not developers. They're not building buildings. They're not looking to build buildings. They are scientists who have an idea that they're building out and they wanna occupy a space. They are not gonna build it. They're not taking that risk. They don't have that institutional knowledge. It's not part of what they do. And that's true across a lot of industries, particularly office users, unless it is a massive company, which as we were seeing in trends. They're downsizing more and the smaller companies are expanding. They're not looking to build. Developers might be looking to build and that's a totally different story. But what are they trying to attract in terms of the types of businesses? But in the work we're seeing and, you know, working across the country, right now with the speed at which a lot of these projects are moving. Many companies are looking to get going quickly in order to access federal incentives and apply for these things. And they're looking for space that's ready for them to jump into. So if that exists somewhere else, they're gonna take it. If it doesn't, they're gonna look for options where they can build it or get a developer to build something as quickly as they can, wherever that exists in the country. Um, you know, the point around impact fees, we acknowledged completely in this that it was all anecdotal. And it's difficult for us to do that apples to apples comparison. We heard the city's done some studies. We'd like that to be looked at and understood. I will say, you know, the mayor's original question on this, what we can do. This was the one we heard anecdotally is most impactful on the retail side of things versus these other industries. And, you know, I, again.
You're talking about, you have an impact phase?
Impact fees and other concerns with that, where I heard directly from folks, again, anecdotal, cause we don't have the dollars since comparison, but. That when you're wondering why that certain chains or restaurants that you'd like to see didn't locate in Flugerville. It's because the cost was significantly higher and they could go to a neighboring community and serve the same population and install themselves at a lower cost.
When you say they can serve the same population, meaning that the population that they're looking at will drive to the location, cause it's within.
Yes. And and again, though, we we can't speak to how those compare in detail, cause we try to pull some of these, but it's a difficult thing to do apples to apples. And to really dig this out and build a full study, if that is a factor, because we could spend all day we want telling people. Seeing the numbers that they know about the income levels in this community, the the people's desire to have these things here. But at the end of the day, a business is gonna make that decision based on dollars and cents. And when we're hearing stories that the dollars and cents aren't adding up, it's something that's worth looking into.
So along those lines, what have you found? Uh, and I don't even know if, I don't even think, I don't. Related to the report, whatnot, as we're talking about economic development over here with that. Because of our extraordinary and extraordinary, um. Uh, household income. What have you seen regarding that and how it affects it? Cause this is like you said, you said that. Um, they see everyone's, I mean, you you put the numbers to the bed. Now everyone can literally see this and see what's going on with our households. But however, we still are are funding, um, barriers per se for lack of terms to some of those, you know. Retail stores or whatever, those higher higher end restaurants coming in over here with that as well. Um, y- you said it was anecdotally. How would we, to the mayor's point again, how would we put a game plan? To better ascertain what's happening right there in that area? Because i- if you're saying, hey, listen, dude, we see that. Dude, you guys got a bunch of people at the hall, a bunch of discretionary income in here, um, but you're not coming here. Um, we can say it's um, impact fees, but we don't know it. How do we, and that's the part I think Caesar was saying too, like, how do we? How do we get to that point? How do we understand that? You mean, I mean, again, I'm big in a, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Somebody's had to have done this somewhere.
But but if that was a legitimate argu- argument, we'd see it on the periphery, right? It'd be, it'd be just outside the uh, the city limits, uh, getting developed. How do you, how do you draw from there? You you get as close as you can without the expense and and I don't think we're seeing that.
Yeah, so it's interesting to hear, like, I'm I'm, I'm not down in which time. I'm just saying, how do we figure that out? I like, how would we scientifically look through that?
And often it's not a scientific reason why a location decision was made.
Oh, you very much is.
No, not, not always.
I've worked in GIS and and market planning.
Yes, yes, I have too, but when somebody decides to open to open a restaurant in Hutto instead of Flugerville. It's not always a one hundred percent scientific reasoning for why they cited that in Hutto and not Flugerville. And you can't really know unless you talk to the people that are opening the restaurant directly. And me listening to anecdotal reasons for why somebody's opened a restaurant in a neighboring community or right outside your city limits, not inside the city limits. Everybody is going to complain about cost. Everybody. Everybody wants to do things.
Nobody wants to pay more?
I don't, I don't have any just outside city limits.
So, so, I mean, to answer your question directly, you need to try to follow up with people who've made those decisions. And come to the real reason why those decisions were made. And it it may be costs, it may be process. It may have nothing to do with cost and process in your city.
Man, I wish we had an economic development corporation that could do something like that.
Excuse me, but we've had some conversations.
But again, it's being a total.
No, not necessarily. Um, a couple of the conversations we've had were very specific to site. Um, and developers that were developing the site and provide insights for why the selection of another city was. Even though they were considering our community, why that city was.
And and we've been able to do a comparison over the the fees.
No, I haven't. It's, I don't know if you wanna call it anecdotal, because it is coming directly from a developer that was involved in the the project.
The developer is telling you why they lost the business.
No, why they they chose to do the business in another location.
I I I want to be, make sure fair publicly to Amy on that. She has relayed that to me at a couple of businesses and. That have told her that exactly.
Right, and you can't, that's still not hard fact.
Unless you compare to the actual cost incurred in the in the other area and then. Compare that to the market force, uh, the market that they reach in that area compared to the market they reach here. You you don't have apples to apples.
What's interesting is that you do see some places where you see it as a duplication, right? Like you see like, quite frankly, that, hey, listen. I may have these two places right next. I mean, I remember when I first came out here in like. Two thousand six and I was very confused. I was like, wait a minute. It's like, we have a Home Depot over here on thirty five. Why the heck would I drive over here to this Home Depot? What's this Whataburger and what's this Chick-fil-A you want right there? It's literally right down, you know, forty five. Like, what's going on? It's within driving distance from that as well. So to your point, you know, sometimes it's not scientific, but to your point. They had the vision and they saw, oh, no, this population is about to blow up here and they're going to be here. And this is a captured audience and want that. So how do you just propose some things that are doing duplications in certain areas and others who are like. Well, it's within driving distance. I can force that discretionary income to come to me as opposed to me coming to them and paying. Well, let's just, I mean, fees. Again, I I I I hate, I don't wanna just say it on fees, cause like, I wanna be able to have.
Yeah.
True information.
Cause there are other factors that go in. I mean, zoning and having the rights land available, where's the frontage, all of that combined. And this is why the the apples apples comparison is is so challenging too, because even when that comes up, the the different fee structures and what applies. Between the two sites is hard to compare. Um, but, you know, it it. It's a testament to the fact that you have the income, you have this opportunity and you're not seeing the development. That isn't just the market forces necessarily happening on their own. There's there's other factors that are influencing this.
Well, Mayor, for the time I liked your, your comment about uh, the target industry exercise. Because a lot of this, um, I mean, the best EDCs out there, you're gonna be ready to pursue any opportunity that's presented.
I would hope so, but that hadn't been the case.
Part of, part of the reason you go through this exercise, one, to signal to the market where your priorities are. Right? So that's that that that's a lot of what we're trying to do here. And two, try, try to give PCDC some guidance. On where to allocate resources based on those community priorities and because you can't chase everything effectively.
That's a great point, and I I have no doubt that your reset search has showed that, hey, wet labs is the way to go in this area. I have no doubt about that. But my concern is that in here, it's 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 a big priority. And this is what we're giving PCDC and the the staff and the board. They're, we're basically giving them their marching orders to go out there. And we're saying, do this. We're not allowing them to deviate from there. There's nothing in here that says, hey, if you, if you get why. I know we've talked about it. Hey, if there's low hanging fruit, they know to go out there and get this. But I'm concerned that we're just giving them a direction that doesn't help them expand if AI is coming up instead of wet labs.
Well, well, let's be clear. We're giving you a direction, cause you're on PCDC.
It's a good point. Uh, I'll say, maybe, maybe we didn't articulate it well enough here, but I'll say AI is in software and information technology. That is a part of that industry. So it's not off the table. And and maybe, you know, we need to have clearer direction here that. These as as priorities, things that are gonna really push things forward, don't preclude. All the regular activity of what an economic development organization does, which is marketing, facilitation of projects, helping things come in. But to Brian's point, it is, it's not to say if AI comes knocking, we say, hey, we're not taking this call because we're only focused on wet labs.
Right.
But it is helping see what kind of strategic initiatives we can push forward to do more than the marketing, the responsiveness, the travel that goes with that. You know, we're telling a story about opportunity here and it doesn't preclude any of that.
I think what I would have liked was wet labs to be one of a few opportunities that we could give direction to to PCDC. Instead of focusing on this one thing.
I I think it's one of four.
Yes, yes, it is.
It's one of four. I'm looking at it right there.
It is one of four, but this is the main thing, correct?
I don't think so, but but okay.
Comment? Uh, I was just gonna say, life sciences is in a growth perspective. When we did SEDS two point O and we launched it, remember, we launched it right before COVID. Okay, so what's happened since then from a standpoint of life sciences to one of the things that Tony pointed to? Is some things in the region that are a little bit bigger than what we could have done. So bringing uh, the uh, to UT, for instance, you're the UT guy. Uh, and being able to have a teaching hospital and have that here became the nucleus for. Us to be able to start looking that direction and seeing what we can do. I think the wet lab thing isn't the only thing that life sciences will go into. But it's one piece of that project. And I think looking at collectively, what can we do if it's a P three, whatever? Is something that we need to explore. This is a three year SEDS. We only do three years on purpose. That's because the market changes so rapidly. Think about even three years ago. And so looking at how we move forward is based on a a living, breathing document. This isn't written in stone. We're gonna see changes in all and advances in all those target industries over the next three years. And we'll see shifts in how that's handled.
I guess, I guess part of the, uh, to Caesar's point, um. Oh, and and by the way, if you haven't looked up the UT wet labs, P three.
Yeah.
That's pretty sweet.
It's pretty cool.
It's a pretty sweet build. That is not something I would thought what it would look like. But to his point. And and I mean, it kinda plays into here, but it also plays in the PCDC in general. He wants to make sure that we've heard before, well, council didn't say PCDC to do this. They didn't direct PCDC. This is what they directed us to. We didn't hear you say that. So consequently, we're doing this from what we got from there as well. So he doesn't want it to be pigeonholed that, hey, listen, this is what this council said afterwards as well, and this is why we're just going this way and working on that. So I I think that's why he 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 couched it the way he did with that.
Yeah.
Um, but but something along the lines of what you're, what you're bringing up was was this is that. I saw the 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 entrepreneurship, or not the entrepreneurship, the apprenticeship. I found that interesting. But I also know, aren't you doing that now? Aren't you going around? Like, I mean, that's just why. I mean, it's good to see that, but I'm like, well, aren't we doing that?
We are not physically doing that. We're not providing space. We're not, but what we are trying to do is to connect. Uh, and convene conversations for entrepreneurship, uh, that include apprenticeship. Uh, we are trying to connect our local businesses to opportunities from school district for one. Um, and then look at apprenticeships secondary to, you know, the marketplace here. And see how that plays in. And we're trying to help our local businesses find those connectors, whether it's state resource or more regional. In order for them to take advantage of it. Okay, so that has been a new, new thing that we've been doing over the past. Six months, seven months, eight months.
Amy, where have we been successful in that area?
We had been exploring and looking at how we do that. And I think if I was really to allow you to hear what. Crystal has to say about that area, it would be interesting. But I think it's, we we aren't applying resource at this point. We're just trying to connect the dots. We're trying to find how are these apprenticeships going to be helpful to them? What resources are available, pardon?
Have apprentices, apprenticeships started anywhere?
I, we've had two successful placements of apprenticeships. Right.
Are are we saying two, uh, successful placements of apprenticeships or print I?
And there is funding at the state available too and we're encouraging them to utilize that.
And where were they in? I mean, I'm interested in, I mean, if we're out there doing work.
I'm gonna let my experience.
I mean, if it's happening, it's good, but.
Sure. So there's a new one we're working on with the University of Texas called Texas Home.
No, the ones.
No, 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 the ones that we've done.
Oh, yes. So, uh, with this school districts, we have connected them with, um, Mobotracks. Which is a relatively new company and they are looking for welders, which we know that's a high demand job right now. And so the school district has a great welding program. So we've now connected them for an apprenticeship. They're working through the curriculum for that. That is one of them. Um, we are also working with Cumberland Additive to um, have students come in, see what it's about. See if there's an interest in an internship to kinda learn in their machine shop.
Companies that.
Are local.
Are local.
But that PCDC has had an evolution with.
Yes.
Correct. Not other companies outside.
Right, and most of the time what we find is it, you know, for us to establish that relationship takes time. For the businesses to even be responsive to some of the resources that are local. And when we first bring them in, they're just busy getting their business up and running. So the companies that are doing well now and are now established are the ones we're making those connections with.
And and to your point though, and this is what, and and by the way, I'm sure Doug made a check mark about what businesses those were. But to your point. You've you've mentioned about what Texas Workforce, you know, uh, yeah, solutions and the board and what they have available. You know, regarding grants and everything else from these. Now, maybe this is a better question for Tony and 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 Brian over here. Um, I found that it was curious, um, but I mean, I guess it's fair to say, hey, listen, PCDC can't just be responsible for this. Like, it's gotta be a partnership and everybody else in all these private sector folks and opponents have to come with it. But as a council, it's not like we can hold the private sector accountable. The only, our only direct report is PCDC. So how do you, how do you work to make sure that if we're talking about this and the mayor was talking about like, okay, what resources do we have? Okay, and we know the resources are made available. How do we, how do we go anywhere else outside of PCDC to say, hey, listen? You guys need to do this, because we can't hold the other businesses accountable, because it is a partnership, it's true, but we have no other mechanisms. To leverage people saying, hey, listen, we're gonna pull, you know, something on you if you don't participate.
From a workforce program perspective, that's, I'll let Edgar answer this. I'll say, this is a tough one. Getting getting employers. Interested in participating in these, for all they have a need, is a tough question around the country. They're, they, they're busy. They don't love bureaucracy. They often see schools as not delivering what they want, even though schools are trying to be flexible to this. So this is a, this is a big question, but forcing it is not.
Well, wait a minute, before we get started, I think you're saying that employers are having a tough. Issue with that type of.
Yes, they're having a tough time hiring, cause they can't find people, but they also have a historical often perception that working with. Any kind of school district is challenging.
People in the school district be teaching the kids right there, but their option is to actually have people in the school district actually work with them and work with them.
It's it's not the, can I, yeah, Edgar can speak better to this than I can.
And and I'll just add, um, some some details specifically around apprenticeships, cause I think it's a really important point. Um, the the power of the PCDC or or Flugerville City Council is not in the administration or the performance of an apprenticeship. By definition, that has to happen at the employer level, right? Or at the employer consortium level. So the power for the 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 opportunity, I should say, for PCDC in the city of Flugerville is really in the convening authority. The ability to compel participation and growth in an apprenticeship consortium that addresses those. That addresses those really key elements that employers are often concerned about. One, which is local talent development. Two, local talent retention. And then three, the most important, actually developing the pipeline of skills and competencies that are necessary for certain occupations. That can be actually expanded and this is and and I'm looking forward to the to the workforce piece here because I'd like to articulate more on this particular front. That can be expanded backwards and forward into adult education, opportunities for career changers, you know. Uh, folks that are are maybe in in later on in their career, in some kind of transition, justice involved, et cetera. Also backwards into the high school via pre pre apprenticeships. The notion being that we're trying to develop a incumbent labor pool inside of Flugerville. That has those opportunities inside of Flugerville via primary employment. One of the key uh data points that I heard uh council member met here mentioned earlier was. The high household income and we did identify that pretty early on in our research. What we also know is that there's a pretty significant in and outflow of commuting pattern in Flugerville, right? So a lot of that net household income, right, a lot of that net household income actually is resides at Flugerville. But the employment itself is outside of Flugerville. So our goal in this workforce strategy and that marries closely with the target industry strategy. Which also marries closely with the community engagement piece of this is that you are developing affinity, opportunity, primary employment. And pathways inside of Flugerville. The displacement, no matter what you do, is gonna happen. There's gonna be X amount of displacement, a certain degree of that, no matter what, because you're in a high growth corridor. You've got Tesla, you've got Samsung, you've got all these things happening around us. So we know there's gonna be displacement. We know there's gonna be supply chain moving in. Secondary and tertiary industry to support those major industries, but we want to be sure that to the extent possible. We're creating that throughput very early on in the K through twelve system, articulating those opportunities, building those support systems. Creating that career readiness so that people have the opportunity to work in Flugerville via one of these target industry occupations. In primary employment. And if they decide not to, or if they decided to commute, then that honestly is not really something. That's in the control of anyone, including city council, right? So we want to be sure.
You mentioned or not saying you, the report mentions misalignment. With the school, there's CTE program or something like that as well. Is that something that you heard from people? Or is that something that you identified as an issue, saying that right now, because we, there's some of us on council literally just sat through um. What is it superintendent search? And um specifically, one of the strengths that we're talking about was the CTE program. And I'm trying to understand, is what being taught, do we need to have a conversation with our compatriots, our trustees on that board? That what's being taught in that program doesn't necessarily align with what's being requested, you know, in the industry as we speak.
Yes, and there are, let me clarify the complexities to to that scenario as well, because there's significant complexities there. So yes, we identified a uh misalignment between target industries, incumbent labor pool. And then CTE inventory. However, that's also very common, right? And the reason it's very common is because. CTE inventory in the secondary public school system is normally driven by student demand. It's not normally driven by industry demand in that corridor in that region, right? There, with that being said, it's not every day that a CTE center, seventy two million dollar CTE center. Is being built in your city. That is a generational opportunity to coordinate with the school district and develop pathways. Into local industry partnerships via modalities like apprenticeships. By the way, the reason you see that red bubble in education is because education isn't what it used to be, right? It's far more ubiquitous now. You can, there's there's MOOCs online, there's all these things happening, right?
That that makes more sense because I was very discouraged, to be honest with you, when I saw that in the in the regression. You know, viewpoint over there as well, but again, it goes back to Doug's point though about like, how are we to, we need to make sure. What's, easier way to put this is this, at times I really don't know if we're all speaking with the same vernacular. And because of that, we're two ships passing in the night. Like, that makes more sense what you're saying there, but that wasn't reflective in the report. So we had to come to our own conclusions about what you meant about post-secondary education or education in general, you know, those things. Does that make sense?
Makes perfect sense. And and honestly, the the definition of that. Gosh, just in the, just in the last several years, the definition of post-secondary education, right? If you get into traditional, then essentially you're talking about four-year university and two-year community college or tech school. But the reality is there are related technical instruction providers. There's bootcamps, there's proprietary training, there's industry-based credentials, right? There's so many different ways of delivering this training that it just gets lost in the sauce here a little bit, right? So the goal and what we identified earlier from the K through twelve system is. There is a generational opportunity here to not only impact the pathway for uh incumbent labor pool development inside of Flugerville. But also adult education, adult reskilling opportunities via inter-local agreements, MOUs. Takes a little bit of work.
Pushing back. I'm pushing back or we've been missing form because what I was told is that we can't do adults mixing in with kids.
You're absolutely correct. With a caveat. And the caveat is typically speaking, you cannot mix those two populations together. Texas Education Code has something to say about that, right? There's other things that prevent preclude that. However, nothing prevents you from doing things in the evening, after hours, at night, adult reskilling, adult retraining, right? Bootcamp training, et cetera. So um and and I had great conversations with with Dr. Killian before he left. Um, and 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 hopefully these conversations continue, but the the sentiment is there. The governance model and the operational model to get that done does take a little bit of work. And we did frame that out a little bit in the partnership section in the workforce strategy here. But I think it's gonna be really critical to understand, A, there's an asset that will be on the ground in the next several years that is generational. Uh, for the for the city of Flugerville. You do not build CTE centers every year or even every ten years. They're hard to pass. Great asset. The next key is, how do we build something that A is CCMR compliant for the district? Because that's what they need, right? They need to be.
What is that acronym?
Career, college, military, ready.
Thank you.
So they need to have the the compliance measures in place to make sure that they're doing what they need to do. But once they have that, how do we then marry those priorities, those student demand priorities with industry demand? That's not an easy process. It takes a little bit of work. It can be, it can be fairly manual. But if you then extend that into the adult education population, now you have a pathway. Now you have a pipeline in Flugerville. That can, in many cases, overcome some of those commuting challenges, overcome some of those primary employment challenges. And then compelling interest on the part of employers in developing apprenticeship programs, which by the way, there's no way. The city of Flugerville or PCDC or the Chamber or anyone can take on that burden. By definition, Department of Labor definition, that is an employer-led activity, right? So those consortiums are very powerful. We've seen them make tremendous regional, local, and even statewide impact across the country. And and when you look at it, for example, since you mentioned council member apprenticeships, when you look at that model. The success of that employee, the placement rate of that employee, the retention of that employee. And the overall career development of that employee is off the charts when you compare it to traditional training models. Or just incumbent proprietary training, right? So all of these, the 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 point that I want to make here is. I I appreciate how this can at times seem a little disjointed, but I can assure you, all of these elements are working together. In support of the sets, right? In terms of the the people, the pathways, the partnerships, the target industries, what we know about the marketing. That's gonna be really critical and essential, the asset that will exist at the CTE center. How that asset can serve as a uh enticement for higher ed recruitment. How the innovation district and or office space and or wet lab and accelerator space can serve as an enticement for that higher ed center. All of these elements are working in tandem um to make sure that there is a competitive, attractive and cogent. Uh, strategy for not just economic, but also workforce uh development in in Flugerville. I know I I said a lot there, but I.
It'll also give you a college degree.
You know, we keep saying wet labs, but with the uh with the. Do we know what the the market satiation is on that, what the target buildout is? Because if UT is building their UT lab at ten thousand square foot and I'm hearing. Two or three other cities mentioned that are already having discussions and or planning. Uh, are are we gonna, and and I'm also hearing this doesn't happen in the next year. You know, three years from now, have I missed it? I mean, are we not looking far enough ahead?
I mean, I think that's, the the point is to to have those initial conversations to look into, to to meet with some developers, check the numbers, see where it's going. Because, you know, this doesn't happen overnight and and I apologize if it seem way, it's not the only strategy intended to build here. But thinking through how we can try to move those things forward, I'll say, the Dawson region is at a deficit compared to other life sciences centers. In the multiple millions of square feet of wet lab space. We have a tiny fraction of the market. So the potential for growth, if you talk to life sciences companies, you talk about where folks would like to see the industry grow. You know, we have so much further to go to get anywhere near Boston, Miami, San Diego, let alone Denver. Or some of the other places that have really built out this sector. And we're we're woefully behind. So I I I reasonably optimistic that there's there's decent capture available there.
You talk about identity. I think we said it before. Do we still have, what is it, Flugerville near Aus, what is it called?
We're not Austin, but we're close.
That's gone, right?
Yes, it will be gone. We were hoping to do that.
It will be gone.
We were hoping to do that through the SIDS and our first, one of our first steps after it's proved hopefully is to come forward. With a marketing strategy to redesign and realign with the city's uh new uh initiatives as well. And us be in alignment with that. Well, it was, it was. Okay, yeah, but we didn't want to do that in it.
No, no, it's okay, it's okay. I do, but I do like, the reason why I bring that up, just so the public understands that is because you focus on identity and like, what did you say PF? Okay, it's fun, but you know, we gotta be more than that totally, totally understand that. And I think that you do have, again, if we're talking about innovation, if we're talking about a Petri dish for true change, if we're talking about trying to drive. I mean, something that was brought up, at least in my panel at this school um school district today, was the culture of Flugerville. And just how unique that culture is. You 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 have, you quite literally have majority minority community with a high income than most areas in the entire country. You have a, you have, you know, a law enforcement group that, I mean, as a young lady said today, that, you know. They make people feel safe and they work toward that, which is, you know, you don't hear that from young people, you know, other places right there as well. You have a a a council who is willing to go ahead and look at trying to see what do we need to do to help jumpstart. You know, innovation, change, business models here because honestly, we're ha, you know, we're glad. I'm gonna go to what you just said, Tony. Just say, we're glad about what we have, but we'd like to um diversify. You know, our businesses and our opportunities to work in other things, our portfolio, there we go, our portfolio over here with that as well. And so I think that having a campaign that talks about that marks out that as well, because I would tell you, when people, those those numbers. That you that you guys gave out beginning of your report. People were shocked when I sent those numbers out to people. They were quite literally shocked by that. They're like, wait, this is it. And you know, and we've been saying it to your point, your word. Brian, anecdotally, we've been saying that for years. I mean, saying, dude, we see this. And you have the numbers that back with it as well. Again, the only thing I would ask is that, and and I don't know, I don't know how this comes about, but we've said it before, think that. When we said there was an assumption that we were gonna pass the SIDS and then we were like, wait, 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 let's look at it and have a conversation about it. What's the plan to get it done? Like, you've given examples, which is great, and you and actually you have some um detailed analysis and things with that. But a detailed plan, something that we can, a rubric we can follow is just great. And I mean, and and we know, right, Brian? If you're batting three hundred and and um economic development, you're doing well. You're doing well there, you're doing well in baseball. But.
Going to the Hall of Fame.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You know, so how do, how do, how do we make sure that we're we're not batting one fifty or, you know, two twenty five? How do we get to that number and working from there as well? And what makes sense?
I I know I really drove that with SIDS one point oh back when I was over there at uh PCDC and we we really, we uh, I was the implementation. Well, I can't remember what exactly we called it. It was the implementation list.
Metrics.
That we uh, we said, all right, this is. Here are all the goals, here's how we accomplish them, here's how we measure ourselves. And and I do think that's great. I don't know that that's something we need to get into. This is supposed to be a document that says, you know, what we want to do, not necessarily how we're gonna do it. I I think sometimes it gets a little too close to how and and my biggest challenge is that the what does not feel well enough owned to me. Um, I'm just gonna mention this. I've I've got, we've got the data, we've got the SWOT analysis, which leads into the. Uh, you know, the the direction. And I don't trust a lot of the data in the data section. Um, I I know a lot of the data seems really nice, um, but some of it seems not as nice as it should be. Uh, some of it seems anecdotal uh and and inappropriate. Uh, in the strengths and weaknesses, weaknesses, we've got stuff that's competing with each other and again, things that that just don't make sense. So I I have a hard time if I don't trust the data and the the SWOT is flawed. Then how can I believe in the the outcome? So I I feel like we've got a lot of more work to do on the SIDS. To help figure out what we want to do. To inform our decision on what we want to do. And then the how we do it uh needs to come later.
Can you give it an example to help us a little bit on data that that?
Travis County is viewed as more expensive for development compared to uh nearby communities in different counties with different tax rates and development processes. Travis County's tax rate is twenty five percent lower than Williamson County's tax rate. So that on its face is inaccurate. There's there's one example. I I I, you're you're welcome to leave with my my.
No, this is helpful. And and, you know, we try to phrase things appropriately when we're hearing, when we're trying to report observations. That were shared with us through this process versus, you know, direct data that was pulled, you know, for example, from census and other places.
There's an element in here, it it has to do with the percentage of people in city limits, the percentage of people or to the total population of the zip code. But seven, eight, six, six, oh, if I'm not mistaken, is one of the uh ten largest by population zip codes in the nation. So, yes, the the city limit is a small proportion of the overall zip code. That has absolutely no relevance, uh, even when comparing the city to, uh, because we're using a lot of the demographic data from the zip code versus the city. And we're swapping back and forth and I think that's a problem. Uh, but it it really, it has no, no relevance.
Well, I'll I'll bring that up because we we did share, you know, noting, but if you look at the census data, which is on the city of Flugerville's definition. Well, from the census, it didn't show the growth that we expected. And the point to make there is that, you know. This is the data that a site selector that us, that others look at versus data that's collected directly by a city. And that census data is on the city limits versus the distinction that we can see so much is happening in the ETJ. And so trying to accurately capture the growth that has been experienced here from an objective, separate data source, we're trying to be consistent.
But the zip code covers many areas that are also not in the ETJ. Uh, they're in Austin's ETJ that uh I think some of them even uh eke up in around Rock and Maynor.
Remember when we we looked at that years ago, like, we end up, us and the ETJ end up being like ninety, ninety-two or ninety-three percent of that. It was something like that.
I I'd say seventy-eight probably. You know, we've got, we've got numbers in here about about wages, but those wages, um, we don't make the distinction if that's zip code or or city limits.
I think we we did have some definition in there and all of those for.
There are a few places we've got asterisks, but we don't actually define the asterisks. Uh, so that's maybe that's just editing. Uh, we've got a note in here that uh we can't, uh, I think it's about housing starts. Uh, and how it's not necessarily an accurate figure because there's so much in the ETJ. But the numbers we have should track housing starts in the ETJ. That's that's part of the data we collect within our planning department, if I'm not mistaken. So we say, oh, but this isn't accurate because it's, it doesn't include the ETJ, but it does include the ETJ, so it better be accurate. So we, we got some going both ways on.
There were numbers from the census there. And again, with those, there aren't the numbers collected by the city because for comparative purposes, we can't use those. In that we cannot get other cities collected numbers. These are the objectively ones processed by the US government. And there's specific geographies that they collect those at.
There there's a point in here where we're measuring um sales tax uh per capita. But we're only measuring the sales tax for the PCDC and we certainly don't call that out. Uh, sales tax per PCDC per capita compared to other EDCs. I think when we compare Frisco, well, Frisco has a, has an A and a B, so I don't know if we're comparing. So I don't know if we're comparing apples uh to apples there. But a lot of, a lot of concerns, I've got a lot of documentation here, I'm I happy to give you a copy to take with you. Sorry, I don't wanna get too deep, too late, right?
What, have we done lots of discussions left, a lot of discussion.
I was have a little punctuation request for this. I get too detailed, sorry.
We hijacked your whole presentation.
Yeah.
No, we we covered everything.
Slide four?
Is there anything that you did wanna point out that we didn't discuss?
No.
He's afraid to. No, nothing else.
I I do appreciate, I mean, I I do, I thi- I think that this is a a very good effort, and obviously there's some things that you can get some clarity on, but I I I like. The ideas, like the concepts, like the discussions, and I like the, you know, where you're going with this. The question is, is that how do we implementation, I'll be working some things right there as well, but um I mean, I think there's gonna be much more synergy anyway. Uh given the fact that um you've got such robust input from various people and the council and other folks over here as well, so I mean, I do appreciate it.
I mean, the the thing that I struggle with is is knowing, knowing when we're successful, right? I mean, it's one thing to say that, you know, we need to pursue X. And and we can say, wow, we've had talks with fifty different people that didn't result in anything, but we were talking to them for the last three years, and now we need to reevaluate for the next three year period. And so, and so how do we get away from box checking, right? Oh, yeah, we had that talk, we 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 met that threshold or whatever, um and 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 get to something that's more concrete, more. We did this as opposed to we we continued to chase this.
Yeah, well, I ask you, what what is your measure of success? I mean, we've seen income levels are high in the community, for many communities, that is the measure of success. What 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 tells you that Flugerville, you know, in three years, five years has made it in a journey?
Touchdown one of those metrics, right? Ninety-two percent of our population isn't leaving to find another job, is driving out of the town every day.
But what sucks about that, um for better lack of term, is that that's the same way it is in Round Rock, it's the same way it is in Georgetown. Same way it is in Leander, it's the same way in Cedar Park, like, that's just the nature of the beast.
Trending other ways in some of those communities, and I will say.
Well, that's the que- but that but that's a different point, right?
How do we trend, how do we make a trend, and how are we comparing against our our benchmarks?
And that, but that's a different question, the question, the question is that.
But I think that is the question.
That is the question I just asked.
I think that is the question, and and I would, I would, I would add to that.
I would, I would, oh, sorry.
When we, when we look at how we measure, you know, one of the ways I measure, what what's our ad valorem tax value, what's our our sales tax of revenue, what's our. Um median household income, uh and all of those have have increased dramatically, that's great. How are they increasing in relation to uh our benchmarks that maybe don't have the same benefits of a PCDC? Uh and how do they compare in, you know, the same market areas? Uh I see our, we we've got a note here, this is, I don't see my page numbers, uh the tax base uh argument in the data says, you know. Our property values, our ad valorem values increased, um but not as much as surrounding areas. Um eh they did do as well as Frisco and McKinney, but we know we had dramatic uh housing value pressure here in central Texas. So we're not even keeping up with uh with the areas around us, so that's that's what I need to know is is. PCDC by implementing the strad- said strategy, having a measurable impact. In comparison to our comparable cities and in comparison to our neighborhood, and I'm I'm not seeing that in your data. Which which worries me.
I guess the question, you know, we're pulling together data to understand what's happening in the community, not to say that these are even goals.
Yeah, but we wanna look forward, but when we, when we look back, did SEDs two have an impact, did SEDs one have an impact? I I need to be able to prove that this works in order to continue to do it, otherwise it's the definition of insanity.
I guess, question I would have partly here too is, one, is increasing the cost of property here one of the goals of this? I mean, is that a goal for the community?
Um I think uh it's not about increasing the the amount of property, the uh ad valorem value in terms of individual parcels or per square foot. But in terms of improvement value and new construction, um no, there there is a point in here where you do say cost of living is increasing, and I think that's in a a weakness category. But we don't compare that against uh household income. So if we, obviously, we know we've been through a bit of inflationary periods, uh obviously, the cost of living is going up. The question isn't, do things cost more, it's do they hurt more when we buy them? And if our uh household income has increased at a greater rate than the cost of living, we're doing all right. If it hasn't kept up, we're in trouble. And and so if we're not, if if we're just throwing data out there and not comparing it to something meaningful, then it is irrelevant.
Just numbers. I guess the only thing I would say to to that, to that, I think adds credence to what you're saying is this. We know that the house, what did you put it, you put it in a nice term, you said housing pressure, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it, dude, we're more expensive than DFW, that's what it is. So because we're more expensive than DFW, do we need to be using those as benchmarks as opposed to our local. Uh entities around us, you know, when we're talking about some information, cause you did talk about how it hasn't kept up with um the the MSA in certain ways, so that's interesting, and why is that the case from there? You know, from that, I think that's, I think it's a, I think it's a a very fair analysis and and point on that. I don't know um how ultimately, realistically speaking, you said that, how do you measure success? I mean, that's what you always ask a client before you you, you know, you get to whatever, you know, conclusion you have from there. Well, I mean, I think we wanna measure success the same way that other people look at these, I think some of the things that Doug threw out are the ways that you measure success. I think some of the things you guys threw out, like, hey, listen, this is how you drive with success, I think the biggest thing for us is that we know we're at that inflection point. And we know that this is going to make a dramatic difference one way or the other on how this community goes. Um that's why I was really proud of what we did in our um retreat, you know, we made some strong decisions, like, listen, we're going to do this, this is what's going to happen. Moving forward, cause we know that point's gonna affect not the next three to five years, but ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years. That's kind of where I'm trying to figure out, you say, hey, listen, y'all need to do this from there as well, and I know, again, I know. You're advising, it's a game over there, but I also know you're not, you don't have to reinvent the wheel, like, you have the monster, you said wet labs because it's like, dude. All these people are doing this right here, we hear this, this is the man, this is, you know, you know, that we feel like this is something you can succeed and go for. What other things can we do that you've seen in other communities where it's like, do this path, follow this path from there as well? Knowing fully well that the market has some interesting dynamics, but also being realistic about, hey, listen, this is what a guidance we need to help move forward on things.
But I I think we also have to live within the uh the reality that some of these, some of these goals. Need to be left a little bit ambiguous, because if we're too specific in what we publish. In a public document about who or what we're gonna af- going after, then everyone else is gonna be like, oh, oh. Here here's, here's the next carrot, right, and so, so it it we gotta be careful. We gotta define the target market, but not necessarily say, oh, we're going after this store or that store, like, like what we did in our our work session. We're like, oh, we like these five businesses, and they're our favorites, but but you can't just start articulating.
Specificity.
Yeah, and so it's, so it's tricky, right?
Yeah, yeah, I'll say, you know, just, and a big challenge with this too, to all of this is. Drawing a direct connection between the work of the PCDC and the city and some of these effects when you're asking what to measure. It's challenging, there's a lot that happens in a community, and so when we're looking at metrics, you know, there's metrics, there's KPIs, there's what you're doing and what you're trying to impact. Metrics being what you're trying to impact in my mind, but part of this too is, it's, you know. Trying to come up ones that do have a clearer line between the activities and the results. Um you know, not all of those are the case, there's massive things happening around the global economy, around the region and others that are outside of your control. So wanting to hopefully be helpful to you and tying those metrics to this work as closely as possible. And so a metric is, if it's decided it's wet lab space or acreage of something, that's something we can measure, and we can see if that's being impacted. Versus, you know, creating jobs is an important part of it, that, you know, if you're growing your population, you're creating all the jobs, but they're also creating jobs over here, and that. That balance of transfer, the the commuting, it's tough, I I know from the past strategies, we did look and see that. That trend was going down, or at least the the ratio of jobs to people was improving here slowly, but surely over the past decade. So it's something to look at or prioritize as one of those objectives.
To Doug's point though, right? When we, when we compare, oh, the 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 target metric is how many square footage of wet lab space we have, are we comparing that to? You know, we we we're we're patting ourselves on the back because we got ten thousand square foot of wet lab space, but are we comparing that? To a, to an area that doesn't have an EDC that got fifty thousand square foot? Are we comparing that to an area, another area as an EDC that got a million square feet, right? I mean, where where's that, where's that comparison in terms of how do we know that we're making a difference? And it's not just, if we did nothing, the market would have done that without us.
That's a good question, it's, there's, it's very hard to draw those fully exact signs on this.
Jim, I I wanna, I wanna, I largely agree with you when you talk about the ambiguity. Uh and I think that is really important when we're talking about the target industries, I want them to be a bit more ambiguous. But there's one place where I think we need a lot more specificity, uh and that's, uh I think we've, I think I've heard from everyone when we've had our conversations that we want. To recruit a four-year university, but when I look at at the SEDs, uh I feel like a uh. An on-the-job training facility would check that box based on the way it's spelled out in the SED, so I do want some more specificity around. What we are trying to recruit from that perspective, it it's not just, it's it's not a a two-year, it's not technical. It's a four-year university.
Excuse me, Tony, give me one second, give me one second there, and, cause I I one hundred percent agree uh with with Doug's assessment there, because. One of the things we talked about specifically about meeting the changing dynamic of of the workforce pressure or the desires of people that are coming into the town. Or the businesses that say, hey, we need this, was the fact that that a four-year university is probably best suited. To meet at those those changing dynamics, right? I mean, right now, we 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 know, and and I I'm not gonna bore you by listing all the AI programming languages. But we we know that there's high demand for those, that those are the certifications that you mentioned without mentioning them earlier. That if you take six months of training uh in in any of these languages, you can get a hu- six-figure job the next day. And you don't have to drive anywhere to get that job, right, you can, you can be working for a co- a tech company out in San Francisco right here. And then a year from now, that may change, and and we need a different language, and and that university is going to be the best one suited to meet those challenges, we've we've had these discussions. And so, and so I agree, there there's probably, you know, a a stronger emphasis that we need to be uh articulating there, rather than just post-secondary education, we need to be very specific about that.
I'll apologize that that might be us on a clarity language, cause there is a direct, very detailed strategy in how you go about recording a four-year university in this plan. So if that wasn't seen, that's a clarity issue on us, cause, you know, thinking through how this occurs in other locations and is specific to a four-year, how you go about doing that, cause it's not an overnight process. And it's very well thought through, and this, yep, it's very complex, it's not an easy thing to do, but we spelled it out in there, we'll make it clear.
We we do, we do the hard things because they're worth doing, not because they're easy, right? So if it's complex, that doesn't scare any of us on this diet.
A little bit about me. But yeah, I mean, I I think that. There is not, let me put it this way, if if it appears there's not a willing partner to get things done here, that's just not the case. Because you have, you know, we we have the desire to get things done, I think we've shown it numerous times over the last several years, that you have council. Is willing to get things done, and we'll, we'll, if we have to make the hard pitch, we'll make the hard pitch, it is what it is with that, but we just need some further guidance and clarity and some things with that.
Just add that I was surprised, just from my wife's in healthcare, just got her LCDC, I'm super proud of her. But I was very surprised to see social services, healthcare, I I assume mental health is in that, in that uh wheelhouse. I was very surprised to see that in the lower left-hand quadrant of your of your grid there. My understanding is that there is a dearth of healthcare workers, uh and and that they are struggling to find them, they're all underpaid, there is no question about that, and they're all overworked. Uh but they're overworked because there's not enough of them, uh and and I found that surprising.
That was, it wasn't healthcare all correct, it was nonprofits and social services.
Nonprofit, social services.
Healthcare would have been in the healthcare category.
Okay, and I guess I didn't see that on the grid, um maybe, maybe I missed that one. Life sciences. Yeah, I don't see.
Healthcare being the life sciences one there.
Well, healthcare would be part of life sciences, interesting. Yeah, and again, there's your software IT, AKA AI programming languages. All right, council, any other questions? This will be revisited, obviously. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. So let me, Amy, let me ask you, um, uh I have two B, which is to discuss um. Budget priorities and two C, which is the financial report, which one is the shorter one?
Probably the financial report is pretty.
Let's let's do that one and get it out of the way.
And I'll bring up Salom for that.
You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, mayor, uh my name is Salom, I'm the financial coordinator for the PCDC, for those that don't know me. I have a quick financial update for Q one for PCDC, which I have a few slides. I'll start with the. The revenue side, when we talk of Q one, we are talking of our report from October to December twenty twenty-four. And our revenue so far for the three months is eleven, uh against a budget of eleven point three million, has been five point four million, representing forty-eight percent. This is represented by the three main items, the sales tax, which is our regular traditional source of revenue. Uh two point three million so far received, against a total budget of nine point six million, that's twenty-four percent. Uh suffice to mention, though, that the month of um November and December are only estimated numbers. As you know, mayor, we are always having two months uh behind with sales tax.
So Salom, could you answer a a quick question for me, it looks like that, and and I apologize, I'm reading ahead, uh the gain on land sale?
Yes, sir.
Was that not included in the uh in the budget that was unexpected revenue?
No, it was not.
Okay, so that's why we're at almost fifty percent, being only one quarter in?
That's correct, uh most of the revenue, as you can see, two point eight million has come from that uh sale of land.
Gotcha, okay.
We have water park uh planned or budgeted revenue, which usually comes towards the end of um the year, uh it's not yet here. But these are the three main uh revenues.
So that'll be, that'll be a little lumpy.
Yes, um tonight, we have uh Valley View Consulting, which may take on any questions relating to interest income. As you can see, fifty-two percent of the budget has come, uh uh fifty-two percent of the budgeted four hundred and forty-two thousand has been um received.
Is that because interest rates are are much higher than anticipated because of continuing inflation?
Uh much the higher than anticipated, but mostly because we are yet to pay most of the um payments, including the four million recreation center is to be paid. Most of the bonds are still not yet paid, they're falling into the third or fourth quarter of the year, so.
And and we also have an extra two point eight in the bank from the land sale, so I imagine we're earning an interest on on that as well.
What was the uh um, what was the the cost basis on that land that was sold?
What was the, the cost basis on that s- land that was sold?
Uh, that's a very good question. Yes, it's again on sale of land, but this number will change at the year end. To take into account the cost of the land. But, uh, based on what we have, uh, at the moment. This is two point eight million again, but at the end, because of, uh, the audit, uh, that will come. They would do some adjustment relating to this number to take into account what was the, um. Actual cost of the land that has been, uh, sold. So yes, two point eight million is again, but it's not a net, uh, balance.
That's not a net number. Thank you.
If you don't mind, I'll take you quickly to the expenditure expenses. Against eleven point eight million total budget, we have sp- spent one point eight million, which is fifteen percent. Uh, and there are four items, the personnel, operating and economic, uh, development incentives. And also the debt service. You'll notice that the biggest expenditure there, one point four million is a debt service for the Whitney loan. The rest are pretty much constant over the years. But mostly economic development incentives are also paid towards the end of the year. And this includes the incentive, uh, payments. Um, with regards to the personnel, it's, uh, constant throughout the term. Of course, in December, it's a little bit high because of the, um. The payments that we get for, for personnel. Uh, the next slide.
So based on, uh, just trying to do math in my head, like looking at personnel. Uh, that number should be twenty-five percent? Is that what it should be? If, in a, in a perfect math world, uh, it looks like it's about thirty.
Slightly more, it's, uh, twenty-eight percent actually.
They should all be about twenty-eight percent?
It should be around twenty-five, it's twenty-eight, it's expected because in December we are always paying, what do we call the term? Long, long, longevity, um, and, uh, is it holiday payment? And holiday payments, we usually get this. So December, it's a little bit high, but yes, twenty-five percent is the expected number across, um.
How does that affect the personnel number? I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on the answer.
If there's bonuses.
Oh, it's, 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 you're in bonuses. Okay.
There's, there's a little bit higher paid in December, so it throws the math off.
Okay, alright.
Thank you. And you see that in the next slide where we are seeing twenty-eight percent, um, relating to that. This slide just, um, gives us a detail of each item. Um, but I'd like to take you to the number, net number, three point six million net income. This is where we are comparing the actual income in total of, um, one. Total income of three million. And then we have the expenses of one point seven. But the net income is three point six million. This is, goes down into our fund balance. And that's what has also helped us to generate the fifty-four percent income interest. That situation will change once the bigger payments will come along. And so. Sales tax being our traditional and main source of revenue, I have this, uh, slide. That, uh, helps us to understand the pattern over the years. There are three graphs. The top one. Just shows us what we call a twelve-month sales tax trading, uh, trend. The top, the black line at the top just shows us that the twelve-month trading is still trending above, um, last year. Though, on the left-hand side, you'll notice that we started off in October with sales tax slightly below. What we collected in the previous year, twenty twenty-three. It picked up in November and December. Of course, those are based on the estimates, but the trend is still not far much different. The graph on the bottom right gives us a picture of how we are trending over the last four years. You'll notice that we have been constantly following twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. There is not much change. And yet, the big change was experienced after COVID twenty twenty-one. So we expect to improve each year, but this, the past three years, I think you understand, we are having tough economic times. Yes, it could be worrisome, but we are just, uh, constantly following the past three years trend. This is what we call a cumulative sales tax revenue trend.
So we're essentially flat year over year.
We are, we are flat over the year, year over year. Correct.
So we're flat on nominal dollars, so, so we're actually down on real income.
Correct. Would have liked to be, be above, as you have seen, the twenty twenty-one, the gray one. We wanted to see that go, uh, above it each year, but we have just been on the same constant. Through, through the past three years. The next slide simply is just showing you what we call a waterfall graph. Um, just, just shows not only the size of each revenue or expense category. But it's also showing us the fund balance at the end. Assuming this is all the income, we have seen that we have. Sales tax, two point three million, that has been received so far. If you add with the three million, uh, other income. Which is the interest, uh, income and the land sale. Uh, we will see that we would be sitting at somewhere around five million. But the end balance here is three million after the following expenses in the category, mostly the largest being the. Debt service expenses and personnel. You'll notice that there hasn't been much on capital outlet. As I mentioned, these will come in the second and third quarter. But also the economic development incentives that come towards the end of the year. But in the end, the balance is three point seven, seven million that has been added to our fund balance. In total, the fund balance, if you see the next slide, this could be. Just the various portfolio of our funds, how it has been diversified, uh, over the various, uh, pockets. The gray one being where most of our funds are sitting, that's a text pool. We see some of the funds are in different CDs that have different maturities, three months, ranging from three months to twelve months. Uh, some have matured and we have also, some of them have rolled over. But also we have some money sitting in what we call money markets. Uh, we diversify our portfolio because they behave differently, but in general, our funds at the end of, um, September. They had dropped when we were beginning to sixty million. The three million that has been added has pushed the fund balance up back to twenty million. Hence, we are able to generate all the interest. But this situation will change once we start making more payments towards the third.
So, Salom, on this, can you tell me, uh, is that number the, uh, the start of the month or the end of the month? That, that's the opening balance for the month or, or the closing balance for the month at the, uh, the top?
That's the closing balance at the.
Okay, so could you tell me between, so, so is that an expense in, uh, Q1? Or was it an, an expense in, in last Q4 that dropped our balance from, uh, you know, nineteen million dollars, nineteen and a half million dollars?
It's a, it's a six million acquisition of land?
I'm sorry?
Six million acquisition of land. You remember last year when we were closing, we actually procured land. That's what dropped the funds.
And the other thirteen-ish million?
Yes.
Uh, what, what was that?
Was that impact, um, road, the road construction?
Oh, impact way was, was one million, one, no, one and a half.
One point three million.
And the debt payment, how big is the debt payment?
One point seven.
Okay, that's not adding up for me yet. I'm still ten million short.
You're asking how, how we move from.
Uh, how did we drop from thirty-five point eight to sixteen point four?
Wha- what I know is, number one is. The fund balance. So towards the end of the year, we would have paid all our incentive payments. Because that's when usually you would, you, they would have been certified to have complied. And.
So those were all Q4 expenses?
Yes, those are Q4. Most of our expenses are in September. Incentive payments, the land acquisition that, uh, was done. We closed on the, um, the road. The Whitney Bank one as well, um, one, one point seven million is, it's paid.
So we're, we're writing those checks in September and they're clearing in October, and that's why the, the, we have a larger.
I'm assuming that's a, that's an opening balance and we would see all those in the, in the Q4 expenses. Uh, not necessarily, cause we're not seeing those in the, the Q1 report as far as I can tell.
Yeah.
Uh, which is why I asked the question, but it would be helpful if we can get a explanation, a, a list of the expenses. We probably saw it in a Q4 report, but it's a, it's a steep decline and it's always noticeable, so always good to be prepared to explain that one.
So, uh, you, you're looking for a more detailed expense report for, for September of twenty twenty-three?
Either that or just, just, uh, an awareness of where nineteen point six million dollars.
We may have seen it last quarter and, and I've just forgotten since then, but it still stands out.
Counsel and, uh, Salom, uh, we have one minute. We cannot go way past seven o'clock, actually. How much more do you have to go? I know you can't finish in a minute. Was that it? You have this man array. Alright, um. I think we got all the questions answered. Alright, thank you. We are adjourned.
Can we get a few minutes?